Well, I appreciate if you would send me that that list as well because if something comes up that's on the lighting assessment, I need to pull them from the lighting assessment list. So when it's submitted again this year, we don't submit any lighting assessment because we do get charged, but the county does charge us a fee of two fifty for each property assessed. But otherwise, we get our money back. So it's other than the two fifty for each property, there's no big deal because we get the rest of the money back to us, even though we're paying it, we lose two fifty. Which is two fifty is two fifty on seventeen properties. That's a lot of money. Not a lot, but it's money. Money is money again. So we learn from our mistakes.
Now, the last time we talked, Tracy, you said that we had to pay the lighting assessment. So that means based on seventeen pro- of nine hundred dollars going out, it's gonna come back to the township because we paid it. Now, you're saying you fixed that already and not-
No, 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 I didn't. I fixed it the next time. It won't give, those properties won't get, I took them off my list. So we want us to get assessed those. But I think what fell last week with the mowing and the nuisance properties, you guys gave some of the the property owners back their money or something. You had the county do that. You did a resolution for that. But I don't know if they would do that for a fee, just for the fee to get back. If you understand what I'm saying, we have to pay a fee to the county for them to do this for us. I don't think they're gonna give us our fee back, the two fifty. But we'll get the rest of the money back.
I I wanna, if you don't mind, Tracy, make one point to the thing you said earlier. We have to ask legal counsel whether it's legally permitted to take the lighting district off. Because we don't own the lighting district, the residents do. And if we have a property that gets assessed, that was assessed from the, you know, very beginning, we've all gone through that over the last three years with the lighting district, we may not be able to pull those off the list. Because we don't own the lighting district.
But you you guys just did a flat rate across everything. And that was the way you had done it. So it's up to the trustees, I feel. And again, you can do legal counsel if you wish, but-
I just-
I feel that if you if you write a resolution and you say you wanna pull those particular properties off, then that should that should work. But go, I mean, I, if that's what the trustees want, then that's fine with me. But I don't see why that should be a big legal issue for them to say, we don't wanna assess our own properties and we're gonna write a resolution and we're taking these properties off.
Well, and 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 I respect your view and you're right about it, Tracy, to a certain extent. But this thing is based on all properties that have always been in the lighting district, no matter who owns them. And so you can't arbitrarily just go ahead and pull your properties out because you're the township. It raises the price on everybody else.
No, it doesn't change it. That's what I'm saying. Our our fees are flat, a flat fee. It's not changing their fees at all. It's not changing anybody's fee. I understand if we were doing the calculating a different way, but it was calculated for you guys decided. Fifty, I forget the amount, fifty?
Each year, each year, as you guys remember, the trustees bet on the price for that year. But it's based on a, it's based on the the D P R energy bill. And then it's spread across all properties in the lighting district. When you pull seventeen properties out, the price will go up on assessment per person that's left in the lighting district. I just wanna make sure we're allowed to do that.
Okay, well, I I mean, this probably needs to be discussed another time because there's some, there's, that can be done. But it it doesn't be, need to be delayed. Just like you said earlier, we can't delay this because that's gonna come sooner than we think. And this is now, this is now February, September, August, September, I think is when it's gotta be here. You know, we can't delay. So whatever you guys decide, I mean, a lawyer takes a long time. So we gotta make this happen quickly. So whatever you decide, it's fine with me. Just let me know because I'm the one that has to make that change for me. And it's not, and it's like, I forget how many thousands of properties that I have to make these changes to if you change all those numbers. So whatever the case may be, um, I can, again, I'll have, um, I think on my list, I have it noted which ones were assessed the lighting fee. So when I send you that package, you guys will see which ones they are. And you can make your decision from there on on the property tax one. Again, there's seventeen of them. That's all. And again, my my whole, we we started this out, but it was about the bills. Again, I need to get, I need to get these bills in. So be, actually, before we start having discussion on the budget, because we need to make sure that we have enough in each budget line to cover when we approve this final budget. Because it takes a lot of work once we make all the, a lot of changes throughout the year. So we need to try to get all the bills in and get an idea of what the average is gonna be for the rest of the year to pay these bills. We found out during some of the fire bills that there were some lines just zeroed out. And we still have bills to pay that we've been paying for the lines. And we need to make sure we get that fixed. If we don't change anyone else, because I know for sure that going through the fire, we found out that there were lines just zeroed out. But we don't know the reason why, and it's probably not important the reason why. What is important is we need money on those lines to pay those bills. And so I just wanted to let you guys know, we need to get these bills in or out of what. Again, it all has to do with the deadline. So I'm done. I think that was all. I'm sorry for interrupting you, Trustee McGuire. You can go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's report, pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, and warrants.
I'll I'll second that.
Okay, we have seconded to approve that fiscal's officer's report and pay all the bills and warrants.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann? Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Are you there? Okay.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. Uh, Ms. Edwards, can we have a beginning resolution number?
So I I'm assuming it is oh oh five. I don't, I didn't get, I know what oh oh four was, but I never got the original of oh oh four to be able to put it in the mailbox. But I know that Trustee Mann and Trustee McGuire signed it. I don't think Trustee McLaughlin had a chance to see that one. Is that the one? No, I'm sorry. That was oh oh two. I apologize. Oh oh four was the firefighter one, right? So oh oh one, two, three, so oh oh five. I'm I'm sure we only have, that was the special meeting, right? So yes, oh oh five should be the next one, twenty-one dash oh oh five.
Okay, uh, resolution twenty-one dash oh oh five, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees hereby agree to accept the twenty twenty annual highway system millage certification.
That's the miley certification of forty-three point-
Eight nine zero miles.
Yes, we do this every year. This is the resolution, um, you sign, and then the the county engineer has another paper that you guys have to sign. Um, I'll put that in the mailbox if you guys approve it. Um, I'll put both those papers for you to sign in the mailbox. Any questions?
We need a second to-
Jim, what date did you use?
For, uh, for this resolution-
Twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I'll second motion.
Okay, we got a second to approve the high, uh, resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five to approve the highway millage at forty-three point eight nine zero miles. Any questions? Roll call, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin? Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Twenty-one dash oh oh five.
Okay. Resolution passed. If it was man. The twenty-one dash zero zero six, the resolution establish the twenty twenty-one yearly dates and times for Jefferson Township public meetings, which is gonna include the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Audit Committee, the work sessions, and the, uh, regular scheduled meetings, which are held on the first and third Tuesday of the month. For the record, uh, the dates of our meetings are January fifth, January nineteenth, February second, February sixteenth, March second, March sixteenth, April sixth, April twentieth, May fourth, May eighteenth, June first, June fifteenth, July sixth, July twentieth, August third, August seventeenth, September seventh, September twenty-first, October fifth, October nineteenth, eleven-two, eleven-sixteen, December seventh, and December twenty-first. These are for our regular meetings and work sessions for two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have a second?
I'll second a motion.
Okay, we have a second to approve the schedule for the regular trustee meetings, the zoning meetings, and the audit committee meetings. Any questions?
Trustee McGu- McGuire, I have a comment. Um, or question, I guess it's a question. Should I have you guys sign each, they're on separate piece of paper. So I have you guys sign each paper? And they'll all be the same resolution or or how you wanna do it for that?
I think we can just assign the, we can sign the documents that were in our packets from the closeout meetings. Or do you want me to have something in a drawer in the morning?
I have them right here in front of me.
Okay.
Um, I just want you to know that I have trustee signature, I just have a say trustee signature on each page. I have that you you made the motion and trustee Mann seconded it. And it's resolution, oh, it says twenty, twenty-one dash oh oh six. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, um, I just need you guys to sign it and initial where there's the correction for twenty-one dash oh oh six on the first page. I'll put the rest of an attachment to twenty-one dash oh oh six. Just make sure you look at each page of the, all these papers and make sure you sign them all when they go in the mailbox. Um, again, I'll try to get them in there by tomorrow.
Okay, roll call, please.
Um, Trustee McLaugh- McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Twenty-one dash oh oh six.
So the Board of Trustees have approved the meeting schedules for zoning, audit committee, and regular and work session meetings for two thousand twenty-one. Okay, next up, there's a resolution. Do we need to even, uh, we got a resolution twenty-one dash zero zero six.
So the next one is seven.
Okay, twenty-one dash zero zero seven. Okay, this resolution states, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approve the seat preparation of meeting minutes for the public records as prepared by go transcript. I move to table this resolution, twenty-one dash zero zero seven.
I'll second a motion.
Okay, resolution twenty-one dash zero zero seven has been tabled. Okay, moving on to, uh, department reports. Okay, we don't have, uh, do we have, we don't have zoning, we don't have code enforcement. Mr. Wolf, do you wanna go ahead and take care of, uh, admin and road report, please?
Yes, uh, but, uh, Trustee McGuire, I have a couple of small items about zoning, uh, that I need to share with the public. Uh, John Calligan has been, uh, very sick, uh, over the last couple of weeks, missed two weeks of work. Um, so he wrote a letter to his board members today, and anybody with interest of of the B Z A, uh, needs to know this. It says, at this time, I'm canceling the February eighteenth B Z A meeting. I was not able to work the last week or two, and I'm not receiving any information from the the permit, um, requester. So he's not prepared, prepared to present the case to the board at this time. With the board approval, I would like to reschedule it for either March fourth or, uh, March eighteenth. Uh, and he's writing all the answers from his board members on that. Um, please, and he said, given them all on his board, whatever their preference is, uh, and he needs at least a quorum of three to be able to set the date. He apologizes for the inconvenience. The second thing, uh, I want to, for the fiscal officer, I want to give you a heads up, the the fire chief is involved as well. Uh, we got contacted by a a farmer's insurance agent about a fu- uh, a demo fund. Uh, the state of Ohio requires all fires now. The claims check doesn't go to the homeowner, property owner. It goes to the local government to be held, uh, for expenses to be paid out of it before the net is released to the homeowner once all obligations are covered. Uh, so there'll be a new demo funds being set up, uh, Tracy, uh, for six one five seven Germantown Pike. And it'll be farmer's insurance. So be on the lookout for any information that you might get in your office. Um, uh, but, uh, John Calligan is taking the lead on this. Uh, he's working with the adjuster. So any information either needs to be duplicated to him or the original to him, and you keep a copy, whichever you you wanna do. Um, and and-
Look, that's the normal process. That's that's not new.
Well, no, I know that, but we haven't, we haven't had one in a while, so.
Yeah, I just, well, actually, we do still have some staying there waiting. But, um, yeah, I usually do that, all that stuff.
Which?
And that's not anything new. I thank you for letting me know that that's coming in, and I'll be keeping on the lookout for it.
Yeah, John wanted you to know that he was establishing a new one, so. Um, First look, you guys, uh, Tony fell last night while he was, uh, doing snow pile work. He was with the fire department, assigned to the fire department with his snow prop to plow the squad and the the fire trucks to get to the scene. And he and he fell outside on the ice. So keep him in your prayers as he's struggling through with some severe, severe injuries. Um, so it's up, the, I would have a feeling that, uh, once we get this snow event behind us, uh, we work twelve-hour shifts. I worked, uh, two twelve-hour shifts to save labor. So we did not bring all staff in all at the same time. Plus, it was projected to be a two-day event, which it turns out it's it's definitely a two-day or more event. And so I, uh, I I've been here since, uh, since Sunday night, twelve o'clock. So I have not left the township. So, um, uh, we're all tired. But I wanted to tell you that the the road crews said this to me. They want the residents to know that they're very thankful for the residents that moved their cars onto their property. So we saw some of the strangest positions of cars into the yards, but they were doing helpful things without being forced by a policy. We do not have a township policy about parking cars on the street, you know, when a certain snowfall occurs. But it surely helped when when a large number of the cars got pulled up into the yard or, you know, down in the park. Uh, and 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 the and the road workers wanted to be very clear that they're very thankful for the people that live here because we got a lot of help. And the people brought food down to the road garage, believe it or not. And, uh, that was very helpful as well. I had the numbers, uh, in my report, you know, when, when, at the, at the next meeting. From the administrative standpoint, um, I have four items to share with trustees, although you know that I've extensively got a lot of projects going. Number one, uh, we are developing a township-wide incident accident report. Uh, there's always been something similar to this just in the fire department, but we don't have a township-wide and and risk control is suggesting that we do. So we're working on our first draft. And I'll be involving the trustees once we get the draft done. Number two, uh, we do not have an employee assist assistance program at this point. Uh, that's a program where somebody that might need to seek some counseling, um, whatever the reason might be. And so we're working with Montgomery County, and I'll be bringing, uh, some information back to you trustees to talk about, you know, can we put a plan in place and, you know, what are the specifics about it? Because we we've had a couple of requests recently, uh, of employees asking, do you have an assistance program? Uh, uh, I I got the email that Tracy had mentioned about those that could not make the meeting, um, today for the auditor. And they're allowing you to respond to those questions, uh, that they were able to answer. So I'll be responding to their their direct request of me, uh, in the next week. Uh, the last thing is, we have a hearing coming up, uh, with the Ohio Industrial Commission with an employee. Uh, due to privacy act, I cannot share the employee's name, but the township is going to be appealing, uh, the original application for this, uh, individual. Uh, we have legal counsel involved. We have our our T P A, uh, company, Care Works Top, which is now Cedric. Uh, they'll be representing us at at the hearing. It's virtual, so we're not going to a courtroom. Uh, but it's all virtual. I want, I'll keep you updated on that legal case as we go. Outside of that, uh, we moved my office, I moved last Friday. Uh, and so, and and John and and Tony are now in my space and I am in their space. So, uh, come visit me, you need anything, come talk to me, ask questions. Uh, but just remember I'm across the hall instead of right at the back door, uh, at this point. So that's my report tonight.
Um, Mr. Wolf, is there extension times in?
No.
Okay.
No, we found out today that our phones are not smartphones, so we they don't automatically bring up your extension when you plug it in. So we have the phone company, Emerald Communications, coming tomorrow to do whatever they have to do to make sure that those extensions, you know, go to that desk. So we found that out today. But the extensions have not changed or will not change, and they're on the website for the public to see at all times.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
You're welcome.
All right, we got the sheriff's depart, the sheriff's report, uh, during the work session, uh, he sent us a follow-up email on that. We can get that posted as part of the record on the website. Um, fire report, please.
Good evening, trustees. Is my audio okay?
Yes.
Okay. Chief apologizes that he had to go to his Greenville council meeting. Uh, he asked me to take over this for him. Uh, the Quick Attack Pumper came in this, uh, last week. It should be going up to get stripped, uh, this week or next, weather permitting. We don't wanna risk the, risk the vehicle moving up to Inglewood till the roads improve. Uh, quotes went out for a fire hose for that engine. Uh, we're getting, uh, twelve sections, six hundred feet for the front bumper line, yellow in color. Uh, the charging handles and the connections are color-coded, so we already have the red hose. We're getting yellow hose. Since the hoses come off the front and the pump handles on the rear, we wanna make sure when we say charge the yellow, that the operator in the back pulls the right handle. Uh, we got quotes this week for the turnout gear, um, from several vendors, uh, for the CARES Act, uh, the twenty extra second sets of gear. Um, six people, uh, are in right now or in very close to completion of their orientation. So we'll be, um, cutting them loose, um, on the medics as seconds and no longer writing as thirds. Um, inventory was completed this, uh, past, I believe it was last week or the week before. Uh, we lost twenty-six days, the chief and I, in December, uh, due to COVID. So, uh, the inventory was behind just a little. Appreciate Mr. Wolf's patience on that. Uh, the employee evaluations, the chief has half, I have half, and we're going to knock that out real quick. Uh, it shouldn't be too difficult because we have so many new people that really did not even go the entire year. Some of them only came on this year or the very last month of December or the last quarter. Uh, the new hires that the trustee, uh, trustees approved last week, uh, we're waiting on them to finish their background screening checks with secure check. Then they will head to Adrian at H R for their paperwork, then on to me for their I T day and start, uh, scheduling them for orientation. Um, I believe that's pretty well it. Any questions from the trustees?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the pumper. I have a title. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I have the title, and I think there's a, there should be a lien party has to go on it. I have to look at it, but I'm pretty sure. Uh, I got it from, I think I got it from Mr. Wolf through Mr. Mann. Was in my mailbox, and I think a lien has to be put on it for the company we're getting the loan from. Does any one of you trustees or you, Mr. Wilcox, know what needs to be done with that?
What vehicle are you referring to?
The pumper you just said you got in.
Oh, the Quick Attack?
Yes.
Uh, that one, you'd have to go to chief right on that. I wasn't involved.
Well, I just wanna make you run out that, um, the original title, it has to have a lien put on it. I think I, I know you guys did that for the vehicle, the staff car. And, uh, I had to mail it to the company that has the loan on it. I haven't been contacted. I don't know if Mr. Mann will be, because that's who that paper originally went to, or Mr. Wolf, or Mr. McGuire, whoever signed that paper. Um, I don't know if that email has come to any of you guys that says we need the lien signed over to us from, the company's not coming to me, we got the loan from right now. Do you remember, Mr. McGuire, you signed the paperwork? Beginning of the year.
Well, the lien is gonna be up to the bank. Uh, I'm kinda, that sounds like, I don't understand why All American, if there's supposed to be a lien on it, uh, whether or not All American would have sent that to the bank to hold till the collateral's paid off. So I'm not familiar with that process on fire equipment. I think, Mr. Wilcox, you need to contact All American and find out whether or not we got the title in error or pass that along to the chief.
Will do.
We did this, we got the title for for the staff car and the Rosa Bowers, too. I think the Rosenbauer was done, but the staff car was sent to us from, I think, eleven and four. Is it Republic Bank that the pumper was? Is that who that was? No.
The, uh, the person is paying for the cr- the vehicle, there's no loan, so you don't have a lien. Um, but oddly, I'm, I'm a little bit confused about the Rosenbauer. Uh, uh, you know, you're right, it should say, unless it says E T H, E T H, E T H A. Do you see that on that title?
I don't have it with me. I'll look.
A lot of times I'll issue the title with that, with that initial in there, that means there's a lien against that title and it's registered to the state of Ohio with a lien. Or or some topic as such. But, uh, the chief's car, you're buying straight out with your coronavirus money.
No, 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 no. There's not the chief's car, it's the pumper. And then the staff car that we already have, not- Not, and I'm talking about the, the one that's on order. I'm talking about the, the staff car we already have that Mr. Wilcox is driving. That one, we had to go get a lien put on at four. Was it Republic Bank that gave us that loan?
Wait, the chief did, yourself, chief, and, uh, uh, Mr. Mann signed all the Republic Bank documents?
That one's done, but I'm talking about the pumper. I got now, recently you gave me the, um, title. It's the original. I don't know if that needs to be transferred. I'll look on it and see, but I've never gotten the original one. We're going to have a loan on that before.
Uh, I, I will say this, we'll find out because that's the one you were money if they didn't have security.
Well, and that's exactly why I asked whether Mr. Mann or Mr. McGuire got any email from them or you.
I appreciate that, really.
Okay. So then I'll just leave it in the files until we hear something. And then leave it there, but I know, I know that that's usually the process. Somehow, that, you know, two of them have come out like that. Like I said, the staff car did. The Rosenbauer's didn't, but the staff car did. I think it depends on where you're getting it from, possibly. But, um, I have it in the file. I, I'm, I mailed the, the lien, the lien was put on, um, the one, the staff car that Wilcox was driving, and I mailed it to, it was done at the license bureau here in Ohio, and I mailed it to the company. And now I got this other title that came. I think you told me, Steve, from Mr. Mann through you. And it was in my mailbox.
Well, you asked me to process it, and that's why I gave it to you. I have a separate vehicle question while we're still, uh, since we're talking about these liens and everything. The insurance company on the totally chief's car is wanting to know if anyone in, in the township received paperwork showing that Ford Motor Credit released their lien on that bunker junk. Because they can, they still have that chief car sitting in, in storage. It cost them so much a day until they see that Ford Motor Credit released their lien. Does anybody know if they've received anything in their offices, you know, stating that that vehicle's lien was, you know, eliminated?
I haven't received anything, but I thought we had talked, and you said you were working on it.
Well, I, I don't have any access to that paperwork, so I don't know who to call at Ford Motor Credit. So I don't know if you have some information, if they have a phone number on it, Tracy, a loan number, uh, you know.
No, because I wasn't involved in with that, um, jester or whoever he was, the insurance company. I wasn't involved in that. I thought you.
I understand, but, but I was just asking if you had any paperwork.
No, I don't have that.
After it was over with?
Nope. All I had was the, the check.
Okay. But do you have the phone number for the lady at Ford Motor Credit? Because, uh, we were told not.